Let us pray. Praise the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord God, thank you for this day. Send us here with the Holy Spirit, Lord God, to guide us to tackle all our agenda for today. This be our surprise, Lord.
Amen. Please give the national anthem and the recite of the Councilor's Creed. Mr. SP Secretary, please call and determine the role.
Good afternoon, everyone. I acknowledge those who call your name. Honorable Julian T. Vasquez, Honorable Janet T. Addes, and Honorable Ivan W. Castro.
Present.
Honorable Larry K. Hinova, Honorable Richard M. Minada, Honorable Pablo M. Libouon.
Present.
Honorable Theresa A. Cantuslaw.
Present.
Honorable Astor Marie B. Tongson. Honorable Jacinto B. Castillo.
Present.
Honorable Marie-Antoinette Olive Chaco.
Present.
Honorable Corinio Tongson, Honorable Jonathan K. and Pantiaga. The presiding officer there are ten members present.
Okay, with the ten members present, we have a call. Okay. Consideration and adoption of the minutes dated July 28, 2025. Do we have, uh... We have corrections regarding the minutes of July 28?
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to introduce only one correction on page two, line forty-three. We will remove this. We will only have seconded because minutes, plural in number, were adopted and seconded. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, do we have an approval for the... Okay, na. Okay, thank you. Approved ngatong previous minutes. Uh, we don't have presiding officers' time. Privilege time. Do we have, uh, anybody? Approve, uh, yeah. Approving, uh, move to approve the previous minutes. Okay, uh, moved by SP Pablo Libouon and seconded by SP Jacinto Castillo. Uh, privilege hour, priv- uh, sorry, privilege time. Uh, Pastor Castillo.
To our presiding officer, Captain Corin Tongson, sir, and to my fellow public servants and to the rest of the staff, good afternoon. It is, um, my joy to present to you that one of our young person in the city of Himamaylan. His name is Chuck Aaron V. Alarriaw, a proud member of the Philippine team who represent the country in the Asian Junior Inc. Adet Taekwondo Championship 2025, held in Kaohing, Malaysia last July twenty-three to thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Chuck Aaron V. Alarriaw is also, um, a resident of Barangay II Populasyon, Himamaylan City. He demonstrated excellence, discipline, and sportsmanship by the winning the bronze medal, a feat that brings pride and honor not only to the Philippines, but most especially to our city. His achievement serves as an inspiration to the youth and reflects the spirit of dedication, perseverance, and excellence. Mister Presiding Officer, in the agenda proper, I would like to pass a resolution congratulating Chuck Aaron Villar Alarriaw for winning the bronze medal in the Asian Junior Inc. Adet Taekwondo Championship 2025 held in Malaysia last July twenty-three to twenty, thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Uh, we include that in the agenda proper. Um... Okay, sige, thank you. Any other privilege time? Yes, sir. Go ahead, SP Castro.
Mister Chair, colleagues, good afternoon. Last, uh, July twenty-two, twenty-twenty, twenty-five, uh, before kita nagconduct sa atonya committee meeting, re, uh, amikable settlement between, uh, Mister, the complainant, Mister Embarki of the case, uh, special case number twenty-twenty-five dash zero one, uh, where the respondent were honorable, uh, Punong Barangay Benjitan and Honorable Kagawad Ramelatan. That, uh, before, antes kita magsugod sa aton tunga committee meeting, we have received a letter coming from Mister Embarki. Mister Chair, dear colleagues, I would like to put on record, uh, allow me to read the letter. You can pa ba, in para receive sa aton ni Mister Embarki, and I would like this letter to be put on record. Uh, Honorable Iman Castro, dated June two, twenty-twenty-two, Sanguniang Panglongsood, City Hall of Himamaylan City, Negroes Occidental, six-one oh eight. Dear Sir, Madam, the undersigned respectfully files this administrative complaint against Punong Barangay Benjitan and Kagawad Ramelatan, both local officials of Barangay Agisan, Himamaylan City, Negroes Occidental. Kindly be informed, past and previous cases were also filed before this honorable office that were unjustly resolved by the city council members despite the pa, the fact that all documentary evidences attached as well as public records were overwhelming. Secondly, it must be emphasized that the Sanguniang Panglongsood is a collegial body where every member must have a separate opinion which must be asserted through the resolution that it aids. Every member must not be swayed by the majority, hence must not give in or yield to the decision of the other members. Thirdly, the council must not turn a blind eye regarding the limitation of their quasi-judicial function. It bears stress, it bears stressing to note that once administrative cases coming from the Obootsman were forwarded to this office for investigative, evaluation, and recommendation purposes, you must not go behind this authority. Unless an unfulfilled process with the complainant was already revised or amended, only then can you have the authority to dismiss. Lastly, all the members of the council must be fully aware of the legal consequences of the resolution that is devoid of any merit and that as public officials, your constituents have the right to criticize you. This is not a form of harassment, but based on the observation of my legal team, the past and previous cases that were resolved unjustly can make all Espa member liable for the following violation to wit under the Civil Service Law. One, grave abuse of authority. Two, gross ignorance of the law. Three, inefficiency and incompetence. Four, serious misconduct. And five, conduct judicial to the interest of public, of the public. In contrast, there was also an infraction in six-on-sixty, paragraph C and letter E of the Local Government Code including section E of the Republic Act thirty-one-nine or the Anti-Graft and Co-op Practices Act. The resolutions are trifling with the justice system, and every one of you do not have any ounce of idea of what will happen to you because you might be surprised. Later on, subpoenas will be issued against you by our respective courts and public prosecutors to explain your questionable resolution. Please do not make yourselves something that you are not, considering that you already exceed your authority. Findings of fact are discretionary and absence of any showing of abuse will absolve you. Ironically, this is true only for magistrates. That is why better refer this matter to your lawyer because your resolutions are absolutely contrary to the law and public policy. Your counsel will also agree that most likely, for the first offense, you might be suspended for six months without salary or benefits. But if other complainants from other cases will also follow suit them, then all Espa members who participated in the resolution will either face dismissal with forfeiture of benefits and will be disqualified to run for public office. You have no one to blame except for yourselves. It is a crying shame when this case will be elevated. Do not wait that other government offices or agencies, aside from the Obootsman, such as the Department of Interior in local government and the Civil Service Commission, will also accommodate administrative surges against you. Bear also in mind that there is no prescription in administrative cases. Anyone can file against you and that even though if you are no longer connected with the public office, you are still not off the hook. In conclusion, please rectify your ways if there is any hope of regaining our trust in you. If you think we are bluffing, you can play, you can place your bet. All Espa members will be wiped out if you will still adopt another erroneous resolution. Very truly yours, Giselin Embarki, complainant. Mister Chair, my dear, my dear colleagues, I find this letter quite upsetting, if not malicious. It assert the very core of this institution. Further, it would be unfair for the outgoing counselor, SP Brunick Habilosa, SP Sam Delarga, SP Jeanette Dulafranca, and SP Junjun Tongson, who I believe, together with the ninth Sanguniang council at that time, has conducted with dignity the said cases. So, Mister Chair, dear colleagues, this kind of letter is a form of harassment and a, a threat towards the very core of this institution. The institution for which I believe that the Sanguniang Panglongsood of Himamaylan City stands for is that service to everyone beyond politics. So, Mister Chair, uh, I move that, I move to pass a resolution that this letter will be submitted to the office of the legal office. Uh... Tanahun ta ako namang mahimo tas ini, kay sa akon na ya pamatsag, this is not, uh, uh... This is a upsetting kind of, uh, letter. So, Mister Chair, in the agenda proper, I move to pass a resolution, submitting this, uh, letter to the office of the city legal.
Thank you, uh, SP Castro. Uh... Any other privilege time for members of the chamber? Yes, go ahead, uh, SP Bosilao.
Last, last July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five, I being the chair of the Education Committee was invited to attend the installation of the new Schools Division Superintendent, Doc, Doctor Lenny Pinyaflore, and the new, uh, the new OIC, Schools Division Superintendent, Doctor Lenny Pinyaflore, and the new OIC Assistant Schools Division Superintendent, both of Himamaylan Division. It was a successful event and, uh, it was, uh, and attended by the different heads, also, uh, teachers from Sipalay since Doctor Pinyaflore, uh, was formally assigned, uh, in Sipalay. Uh, all the chief, uh, the supervisors and the principals were, were also present. And then I was asked to speak on behalf of, uh, our city mayor, so I also did it, though it was an impromptu one. Thank you.
Thank you, SP Terry Bosilao. So, uh, any other privileged, uh, privilege time? Since I hear naan, um, question, may I call any question time? Okay, na. Any question time? Why? Okay. So, we go to the, uh, reference of business. Uh, thirteen point, uh, referral to the Committee on Appropriations. Thirteen point one, request for the passage of a resolution to update the various depository accounts of the city with the following as authorized signatories to wit: Honorable Ruelio Raymond Aytonson Jr., City Mayor; Honorable Justin Dominic Eschatuslaw, City Vice Mayor; Saiki G. Hisona, City Government Department Head One; Caroline T. Castro, City Treasurer; Mary Grace Ogoza. Mary Grace Ogoza, Assistant City Treasurer, Alternative Signatory in the absence of the City Treasurer. Thirteen point two. Okay, go ahead.
Thirteen point one, please allow me to read the letter dated July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, addressed to the honorable members of the Sanguniang Panglongsood Himamaylan City through Honorable Justin Dominic Eschatuslaw, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer. Gentlemen, madams, this is to respectfully request the honorable members of the Sanguniang Panglongsood for the passage of a resolution to update the various depository accounts of the city with the following as the authorized signatories to wit: Ruelio Raymond Aytonson Jr., City Mayor; Justin Dominic Eschatuslaw, City Vice Mayor; Saiki G. Hisona, City Government Department Head One; Caroline T. Castro, City Treasurer; Mary Grace Ogoza, Assistant City Treasurer, Treasurer, Alternate Signatory in the absence of City Treasurer. Attached here too is the letter from City Treasurer, Caroline T. Castro, and a copy of memorandum order number twenty-twenty-five dash fifty-six, series of twenty-twenty-five, dated July twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, designating Saiki G. Hisona, Ph.D., as authorized signatory for the LGU's transactions below one hundred thousand pesos. I am looking forward for your favorable response on this request. Thank you, very truly yours, Ruelio Raymond Aytonson Jr., City Mayor. Mister Presiding Officer, we have eleven LBP accounts and two DBP accounts. Uh, if there are no questions, I move for the approval of this item in the agenda proper. Ah, Karun Paguro.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, escape president Jeda Pempliega is recognized. Good afternoon. Okay, uh, thirteen point two. Request for the passage of a resolution authorizing Saiki G. Hisona, Ph.D., to sign and, and accordingly, in behalf of the city mayor, the disbursement vouchers, checks, obligation requests, and supporting documents regardless of the amount, only for the payment of the following: term loan amortizations with Land Bank of the Philippines and Development Bank of the Philippines; GSIS premiums and insurance and other payments; pag-ibig GSIS, Phil Health, BIR employee compensation; BIR taxes from suppliers; BIR documentary stamp; KCAT internet, Globe internet, Inov internet? Inovi? PLDT internet, smoke emission, LTO, nuseco, and prime water. Go ahead.
July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, addressed to the honorable members of the Sanguniang Panglongsood Himamaylan City through Honorable Justin Dominic Eschatuslaw, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer. Gentlemen, madams, this is to respectfully request the honorable members of the Sanguniang Panglongsood for the passage of a resolution authorizing Saiki G. Hisona, Ph.D., to sign and act accordingly in behalf of the undersigned the disbursement vouchers, checks, obligation requests, and supporting documents regardless of the amount, only for the payment of the following: term loan amortizations with Land Bank of the Philippines and Development Bank of the Philippines; GSIS premiums and insurance and other payments; pag-ibig GSIS, Phil Health; BIR employee compensation; BIR taxes from suppliers; BIR documentary stamps; KCAT internet; Globe internet; Inovi internet; PLDT internet; smoke emission; LTO, nuseco, and prime water. Attached here too is the copy of executive order number twenty-twenty-five dash forty-four, series of twenty-twenty-five, dated July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, designating Saiki G. Hisona, Ph.D., as authorized signatory for the LGU's transactions, regardless of the amount for the above mentioned obligations. I am looking forward for your favorable response on this request. Thank you, very truly yours, Ruelio Raymond Aytonson Jr., City Mayor. If there are no more question in this item, Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this item in the agenda proper.
Thank you. Okay, referral to the Committee on Loss. Thirteen point three. Request for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the city mayor to sign and enter into a contract relative to hiring of professional services effective August fourth, twenty-twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Chargeable, chargeable to the budgetary item, City Planning and Development Office Enhanced Comprehensive Plan, ECDP Revision Updating Program. See certified, certified as urgent. Names: Mister Churchill Aguilar, fifty, Aguilar, fifty thousand per month, August fourth, twenty-twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Mister Joakin Diyabot, forty thousand, August fourth, twenty-twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Mister, committed loss.
Good afternoon, Mister Chair. Uh, there's a letter coming from the office of the city mayor. Allow me to read this letter. July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five, the honorable members Sanguniang Panglongsood Himamaylan City through Honorable Justin Dominic Eschatuslaw, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer. Gentlemen, madams, the undersigned respectfully endorses to the honorable Sanguniang Panglongsood the her to attach individual drop contract of professional services by and between the city of Himamaylan in the following: Number one, Mister Churchill Aguilar; number two, Mister Joakin Diyabot, who are being hired to perform various tasks and function for the period of August fourth, twenty-twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Chargeable under the City Planning and Development Office Enhanced Comprehensive Plan or ECDP Revision Updating Program and hereby request that the resolution be passed by the honorable body authorizing the undersigned to sign decide contracts on behalf of the city. I am looking forward for your favorable response on this urgent request. Thank you, very truly yours, Honorable Ruelio Raymond Aytonson Jr., City Mayor. For the information of everybody, since it is certified as urgent, allow me to read the contract of professional services. Okay. Know all men by this present, this contract of service entered into by and between the city of Himamaylan, a local government unit duly organized and existing, under the laws of the Republic of the Philippines which, with office address at Himamaylan City Hall, Rizal Street, Barangay Talaban, Himamaylan City, Negroes Occidental, represented by its city mayor, Ruelio Raymond Aytonson Jr., hereinafter referred to as the First Party, and Churchill Aguilar, of Legal Age, Filipino and resident of Cagayan di Oro, Philippines, hereinafter referred to as the Second Party. Witness it. Whereas the First Party plans to prepare the local public transport route plan, all the LPTRP to analyze public transport supply and demand and identify specific transport supply gaps for travel. Whereas the First Party is likewise in need of a capability building for LGU personnel. Whereas the First Party is in need of the services of the Second Party to assist in the above mentioned undertakings, and the Second Party is willing to perform the various undertakings needed by the First Party. Now therefore, for in consideration of the foregoing premises, the parties hereby mutually agree to enter into an agreement with the following terms and conditions herein, herein under set forth. Section one, the First Party engage, hereby engages the services of the Second Party to perform the following tasks and functions. Letter A, conducts stakeholders consultation in the Enhanced Comprehensive Development Plan, ECDP, and Local Shelter, Shelter Plan. Analyze and interpret, interpret data gathered, craft the ECDP and SLP with the City Planning and Development Office, refine and retune the Strategic Performance Management System of the LGU, coaching and mentoring personnel, and conduct periodic assessment evaluation performance. Section two, this engagement shall be the period of five and a half months from August fourth, twenty-twenty-five, December thirty, thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. For the contract of service, professional service for Mister Yabot, know all men by this present, this contract of service entered into by and between the city of Himamaylan, a local government unit duly organized and existing under the laws of the Philippines, with office address at Himamaylan City Hall, Rizal Street, Barangay Talaban, Himamaylan City, Negroes Occidental, represented by its city mayor, Ruelio Raymond Aytonson Jr., hereinafter referred to as the First Party, and Joakin Diyabot, of Legal Age and a resident of Marikina City, Metro Manila, Philippines, hereinafter referred to as the Second Party. Witness it. Whereas the First Party intends to pursue the development goals of Himamaylan City in relation to arts, culture, sports, youth participation, tourism, and environment integrated in the Enhanced Comprehensive Development Plan. Whereas the First Party will review for potential development the old city hall, second floor, as performing arts center with small studios and black box mini theater. Whereas the First Party will participate in development of the youth in arts, cultural, sports, and ecological programs. Whereas the First Party will consolidate the position and role of Himamaylan City as a vibrant hub and center for arts, culture, and cycling in, in all its forms in the Southern Negroes. Whereas the First Party is likewise to develop youth participation in arts, culture, cycling, sports, ecotourism, and environmental, environment-related activities and events. Whereas, the First Party is in need of services of the Second Party to assist in the above mentioned undertakings, and the Second Party is willing to perform the various undertakings needed for the First Party. Now therefore, for in consideration of the foregoing premises, the parties hereby mutually agree to enter into an agreement with the following terms and conditions herein under set forth. Section one, the First Party hereby engages the services of the Second Party to perform the following tasks and function: redevelopment to the old city hall, second floor, propose Himamaylan City Cultural Center, propose Himamaylan City Ballroom, and assist in the preparation of the following activities and events: bike count for mobility awards in the Climate Reality Project, tent tour the Five Flies Negroes Park by Himamaylan City Night Ride with simultaneous rides in various cities and towns of all over Negroes; the second Himamaylan Triathlon, theater and performing arts training workshop in the Negroes Island Region Bike Packing Camping Tour. Section two, this engagement shall be the period of six months from August fourth, twenty, twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. Mister Chair, since this is certified as urgent, I beg for the indulgence of the body to be, this, uh, this request be included for business for today.
Thirteen point four. Request for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the city mayor to enter into a sister city or twinning agreement with the city of Cebu, Philippines.
Mister Chair, letter coming from our city mayor, dated August one, twenty-twenty-five, which reads: "The honorable members of the Sanguniang Panglongsood Himamaylan City through Honorable Justin Dominic Eschatuslaw, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer, gentlemen, madams, the undersigned respectfully request the honorable members of the Sanguniang Panglongsood for the passage of a resolution authorizing the undersigned to enter into a sister city or town twinning agreement with the city of Cebu, Philippines. I'm looking forward for, for favorable response in this request. Thank you, very truly yours, Ruelio Raymond Aytonson Jr., City Mayor. Mister Chair, in the agenda proper..." Mr. Chair, in the agenda proper, I move that this subject be included for business for the day.
Thank you. Our referral to the Committee on Land Use, Housing, and Settlements. Request passage for a resolution authorizing the city mayor to negotiate with the following persons for the purchase of a lot to be utilized by the National Food Authority for the purpose of putting up their warehouse facility to it. Number one, Roberto B. Sigovia; number two, Milagrosy Ruiz Matias et al. and Jose Maria R. Hesena et al. Mister, uh, Committee on Land Use and Housing Settlements.
I'll take charge, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Referral to the Joint Committee on Environment and Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction and Management. Request of the passage of the resolution requesting the provincial government of Negros Occidental to, for assistance in declagging and desilting of various silted rivers of Himamaylan City which caused flooding during the onslaught of the Tropical Depression increasing last July seventeen to eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Uh, the Committee on Environment and Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction and Management.
Doctor, everyone, letter from the city mayor Rojillo Raymond Itongson, Junior, July twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, the honorable members Sangguniang Panlongso di Mailean City through Honorable Justin Dominic Esgetoslaw, Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer. Gentlemen, Madame, the undersigned respectfully request the honorable members of the Sangguniang Panlongso for the passage of a resolution, requesting the provincial government of Negros Occidental for assistance in declagging and desilting the various silted rivers of Himamaylan which caused flooding during the onslaught of Tropical Depression increasing last July seventeen to eighteen, twenty twenty-five. I am looking forward for the favorable response on this request. Thank you. Very truly yours, Rojillo Raymond Itongson, Junior, City Mayor.
Thank you. Referal to the Committee on Education, thirteen point seven. Request for the adoption of a resolution authorizing the city mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement by and between the Central Philippine State University and local government unit of Himamaylan relative to the internship program of the above-mentioned school. The Committee on Education.
This request is supported by different documents. Letter of request by Mr. Gregorio Prado, OIC Program Head, College of Agriculture and Forestry, Forestry Department, Central Philippine State University, Barangay Kamingawan, Kabangkalan City. Then memorandum of agreement by and between the CPSU and the local government of Himamaylan City, and the letter of endorsement by our mayor, Honorable Rojillo Raymond Itongson, Junior. So, I therefore move for the inclusion of this item in our business for the day.
Thank you. Committee reports by the Committee on Appropriations, fourteen point one. Request for the adoption of a resolution declaring operative the fiscal year twenty twenty-five supplemental budget number one of the Sangguniang Kabataan of Barangay Tuoy in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred forty-six pesos.
Committee meeting July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, at two P.M. Venue SP Session Hall. Subject fiscal year twenty twenty-five supplemental budget number one of Sangguniang Kabataan of Barangay Tuoy. Information and action taken, the local finance committee submitted the supplemental budget number one of Sangguniang Kabataan of Barangay Tuoy and was referred to the Committee on Appropriation during the fourth regular session of the tenth Sangguniang Panlongso for review and as presented as follows. Sangguniang Kabataan of Barangay Tuoy involving an appropriation in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred forty-six pesos and fifty-two centavos. The local finance committee of the City of Himamaylan pre-reviewed the above-mentioned supplemental budget number one of Sangguniang Kabataan of Barangay Tuoy and endorsed the same to the Sangguniang Panlongso for appropriate action. Recommendation as the presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, supplemental budget number one of Sangguniang Kabataan of Barangay Tuoy is in order and compliant with the necessary documentary requirements, the Committee on Appropriations thus recommends to the Sangguniang Panlongso to declare operative the supplemental budget number one of the Sangguniang Kabataan of the said barangay. Concord members of the Committee on Appropriations, Honorable Emmanuel Castro, Honorable Pablo Libuon, Honorable Hasinto Castillo, and Honorable Teresita Gamposilao, Vice Chair. The agenda proper, I move for the approval of this item, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Um, fourteen point two, request for the adoption of a resolution declaring operative the uh, financial year, fiscal year of twenty twenty-five supplemental budget of barangay nabalian in the amount of one hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred sixty-four pesos and fifty-seven centavos.
By the Committee on Appropriation, State of Committee Meeting, July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, at two P.M. Venue SP Session Hall, subject fiscal year twenty twenty-five supplemental budget number one of barangay nabalian. The local finance committee submitted the supplemental budget number one of barangay nabalian and was referred to the Committee on Appropriations during the fourth regular session of the tenth Sangguniang Panlongso for review and as presented as follows. Barangay nabalian involving an appropriation in the amount of one hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred sixty-four pesos and fifty-seven centavos. The local finance committee of the City of Himamaylan pre-reviewed the above-mentioned supplemental budget number one of barangay nabalian and endorsed the same to the Sangguniang Panlongso for appropriate action. Recommendation as the presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five supplemental budget number one of barangay nabalian is in order and compliant with necessary documentary requirements, the Committee on Appropriations thus recommends to the Sangguniang Panlongso to pass a resolution declaring operative the supplemental budget number one of the said barangay. Concord members of the Sangguniang Panlongso, Honorable Emmanuel Castro, Honorable Pablo Libuon, Honorable Hasinto Castillo, and Honorable Teresita Gamposilao, Vice Chair. In the agenda proper, I move for the approval of this item.
Sa education.
Okay. By the Joint Committee on Appropriations, Committee on Loss. Request for the adoption of a resolution granting authority to the city mayor to negotiate for loan with any banking institution from for the acquisition of highly technical equipment with semi-automatic segregation system including construction of materials recovery facility for sanitary landfill enhancement program. Committee on Appropriations and Loss.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to defer this matter for the next session pending the committee meeting with the technical and focal person of this request.
Thank you. Uh, by the Committee on Education, proposed ordinance establishing transparency measures in the utilization of special education fund in the City of Himamaylan authored by the Vice Mayor Justin Esgetoslaw.
This item is deferred pending committee meeting which is scheduled on Thursday, August seventh, at ten o'clock in the morning at the session hall.
Thank you. Calendar of business, unfinished business, fifteen one. A Verified Answer of Respondents, Barangay Captain Benzitan and Kagawad Ramilton of Barangay Agisa di Mailean City. Uh, SP Administrative Case Number two, two, two zero, two five dash zero one.
Mr. Chair, considering that during the last time sa committee meeting, we are not able to reach an amicabositement between the respondent and the complainant, uh, since we are now in the stage of determination of the probable cause. So may I solicit sa kuwan sa aton mga opod kun sa noh kita makapungko uh, schedule for a committee meeting for the determination of the probable cause of this administrative case. May I ask, pwede ka mo Thursday? Considering nga may public hearing si Tita Terry sa ordinance sa education, at the same time we are rescheduling the postponed committee meeting sa aton kina ngas sanitary landfill, the same date sa Thursday. Kun okey lang sa inyo, pasunod dun ta na lang. Para arap pa, Thursday na lang, may service I think, Chair. Uh...
Nine.
Okay.
So, the committee meeting for this matter, at the same time sa sanitary landfill will be on Thursday na lang.
Morning, Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, pasunod dun ta na lang, sa committee ni SP.
So, can we start with the, uh, with all, all three, uh, at nine o'clock in the morning on Thursday? Nine, ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, pasunod dun ta lang.
Ten o'clock, okay. Okay, so everything is set on December, uh, Thursday of August seventh, um, ten o'clock in the morning. Thank you. Uh, we go back to the business of the day. Okay, uh, thirteen point one. Appropriations. Amon na siya na, okay.
Thirteen point one, I move to pass a resolution to update the various depository accounts of the city with the following, as authorized signatories to it, Honorable Rojillo Raymond Itongson, Junior, I, Itonson, Junior, City Mayor, Honorable Justin Dominic Esgetoslaw, City Vice Mayor, Psyche G. Hisona, City Government Department Head, One, Caroline T. Castro, City Treasurer, Mary Grace O. Goza, Assistant City Treasurer, Alternative Signatory in the absence of City Treasurer.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously approved, passed. Um, thirteen point two, request for the passage of a resolution. Go ahead.
I move to pass a resolution authorizing Psyche G. Hisona, Ph.D., to sign and act accordingly in behalf of the undersigned the disbursement vouchers, checks, obligation requests, and supporting documents regardless of the amount only for the payment of the following: Term loan amortizations with Land Bank of the Philippines and Development Bank of the Philippines, GSIS premiums and insurance and other payments, pag-ibig, GSIS, field health, BIR employee compensation, BIR taxes from suppliers, BIR documentary stamp, K-CAT internet, Globe internet, Inovi internet, PLDT internet, smoke emission, LTO, nuseco, and prime water.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously passed.
Probable na ano, passed, yep.
Unanimously approved, okay, thank you. Then we go to, uh... Thirteen point five, dano?
Okay, passage, pata dano.
Thirteen point five, Land Use Housing Committee. Twenty point three, upon request for the Committee on Loss, thirteen point three.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to pass a resolution granting authority to the city mayor to sign and enter into a contract relative to hiring professional services effective for, effective August fourth, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five by and between Mr. Churchill Aguilar for the fifty thousand pesos rate per month and Mr. Joaquin Diabot forty thousand pesos per month from August fourth, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Um, all those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously approved. Thirteen point four. Committee on Loss, thirteen point four.
To Chair, I move to pass a resolution granting authority to the city mayor to enter into a sister city or town twinning agreement with the City of Cebu, Philippines.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand, okay unanimously approved. Um, refer to the Committee on Land Use, thirteen point five.
Refer for committee na siya.
Ah, refer to committee, sorry, referral. Thirty point six, if, uh, Committee, Joint Committee on Environment and Committee on Disaster Reduction, Reduction, Risk and Reduction Management, thirteen point six.
Requesting the passage of the resolution requesting the provincial government of the Negros Occidental for assistance in declagging and desilting the various silted rivers of Himamaylan City which caused the flooding during the onslaught of Tropical Depression increasing last July seventeen to eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously approved. Committee on Education.
Mr. Chair, I move to pass a resolution authorizing the city mayor to sign the memorandum agreement by and between the Central Philippine State University and the local government unit of Himamaylan City relative to the internship program of the above-mentioned school.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand, thank you, unanimously approved. Fourteen point one.
I move for the adoption of a resolution declaring operative the fiscal year twenty twenty-five supplemental budget number one of the Sangguniang Kabataan of Barangay Tuoy in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred forty-six pesos and fifty-two centavos.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously approved. Fourteen point two.
I move for the adoption of a resolution declaring operative the fiscal year twenty twenty-five supplemental budget number one of barangay nabalian in the amount of one hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred sixty-four pesos and fifty-seven centavos.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously approved. Um, fourteen point four, siya na, deferred, okay. Proposed ordinance establishing. Uh, fourteen point four. Well, yeah. Other matters, um, sixteen point one, Sangguniang Kabalaluigan Resolution, zero six. Yes, go ahead, sorry.
Point to border, Mr. Chair, si SP Pastor Castillo, may motion pa sa privilege speech siya, together with me.
Okay, um, for motion.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to pass, um, resolution, uh, giving a plaque of appreciation to Mr. Chuck Aaron Villar Alriau for winning the bronze medal in the Asian Junior and Cadet Ataiwondo Championship twenty twenty-five held in Melasha last July twenty twenty-five.
Um, all those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously approved.
Mr. Chair, I move to pass a resolution passing forward the letter of, uh, Mr. Gusel Imbarkey which he sent to the all members of the Sangguniang Panlongso to the office of the city legal officer for possible, for evaluation and for possible action taken.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand unanimously approved. Okay, we go to other matters, no? Uh, okay. Sixteen point one, Sangguniang Kabalaluigan Resolution, number zero six, eight eight, Series of two, zero, two, two, five, a resolution affirming the decision in the administrative case number two, zero, two, four, zero, zero, two, of the City of Himamaylan by and between Jean Lucero as complainant versus Honorable Cherry Ho Belargas respondent. Sixteen point two, Sangguniang Kabalaluigan Resolution, twenty twenty-five, zero, six, nine, zero, a resolution dismissing administrative case number SP two, zero, two, five, zero, zero, four, AC by and between Rona Hem Gayunga as the complainant, Honorable Francis M. Melangarin as the respondent, both of barangays sa right city of Himamaylan Negros Occidental in the lapse of the, for the lapse of the prescriptive period required to file an appeal with the affiliate body, the quasi-judicial body of the Sangguniang Kabalaluigan. Sixteen point three. Memorandum circular two, zero, two, five, zero, five, zero, election of the Philippine Councilors League Provincial Federation, City Chapter, and Regional Council Officers for the term twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight on August thirteenth, at Troy's Hotel and Convention Center, Barangay Pano, Koenegos Bakolod City. Sixteen point four, Executive Order Number two, zero, two, five, dash forty-three, an executive order creating the Local Energy Efficiency and Conservation Committee and Energy Efficiency and Conservative Office. Any other matters? Okay, since a here na, move to adjourn. Okay, um, move by SP Julian Vasquez, seconded by Jada Pamplega.